Called to order the Monday, July 21st meeting, the Conestoga Valley Board of School Directors. I want to welcome everyone that's here tonight, as well as those that are joining us online. I do want to mention that we had a retreat the last Monday in our Zoom where we went into executive session to review and discuss the superintendent's evaluation as well as his contract. Will you all please join me for a pledge to the flag?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and the two republics from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our work session, the first of two meetings this month, in which we receive most of the informational presentations, as well as discuss and deliberate future decisions, official actions, or directives. There may also be some action voting issues required on timely issues or to meet time-restrained guidelines. Our meetings observe all legal and policy requirements to the best of our understanding and ability, and all agendas are available with their related documents posted on the district website. Mrs. Martin, could we have attendance, please?
All school directors are present tonight. We do have a quorum in place.
Are there any changes to the agenda, additions, deletions, or corrections?
There are not.
I'm sorry.
There are none.
Oh, okay. Do you have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as it was presented?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All of them say aye.
Aye.
Any needs of extensions? If not, the agenda is approved. Dr. Hartman, have you some comments for us?
I do. Good evening. Happy to announce several new staff members tonight, or to introduce several new staff members. So bear with me, we have about seven we're going to introduce this evening. So I'd like to start with Daniel Smith. Daniel, can you give us a little wave?
Everybody.
Daniel's being hired as a high school emotional support teacher. He has his bachelor's degree in history from Shippensburg, and he received a social studies teaching certification, special education teaching certification, and a master's degree in ed leadership from Immaculata University. He has served as a special education and social studies teacher with the Chester County Intermediate Units Gateway Program since 2019. He also worked as an instructional assistant with the Chester County IU prior to starting his teaching positions. Prior to this, he actually served as an English teacher and instructor for a year while living in Mexico, so interesting background. So welcome, Daniel. Next, we have Anya Ditzler. Anya, if that name's familiar, she's a CV alum, correct? Anya recently completed her student teaching right here at CV, Fritz Elementary School. She received her bachelor's in early childhood education this past spring from Millersville. She is also very involved in the music program while at Millersville, so we threatened to make her sing tonight, but then we told her we were just kidding. Welcome. Next, we have Madison Blanca for middle school learning support. Madison recently graduated also from Millersville with dual certification in early childhood education and special education. She completed her student teaching in the Hempfield School District at both Landisville Primary School and East Petersburg Elementary. Welcome, Madison. Next, we have Teresa Ashby. Teresa will be first grade at Leola. She has her bachelor's degree, originally her bachelor's degree in sociology and criminal justice from Shippensburg University. She has taught in several districts. Most recently, she has served as a kindergarten teacher in the school district of Lancaster since 2023, where she was Lancaster County's grand prize winner for the Citadel's Art of Learning Award in 2025. She also instructs sociology and psychology classes for the Lancaster Career and Technical Center, and she did go back and got her teaching certificate from Cabrini University and her master's degree. So welcome, Teresa. Andrew Jazinski. Andrew is going to be our new high school band director. He'll be moving back to PA from Massachusetts, where he has been a band and orchestra director and a music teacher with the Framingham Public Schools near Worcester since 2011. Andrew has his bachelor's in music education from Lebanon Valley College and his master's in music education from the University of Florida. Sabrina Castro. So Sabrina might be a familiar face because she's already started with us. She is our new administrative assistant to the CFOO and our new front desk receptionist here at district office. Sabrina has previously been an administrative assistant, working with the school district of Lancaster, also the PA Department of Human Services, and most recently, she has worked as a human resources assistant with Substitute Teacher Services. So a wealth of educational experiences, and we're glad to have her here, and she's been doing a great job. So welcome, Sabrina. And finally, I'd like to introduce Dr. Lena Cordero.
Hello, everybody.
Dr. Cordero started her career, first of all, Dr. Cordero is going to be our new principal at Fritz. Dr. Cordero started her career as a fifth and sixth grade math and social studies teacher at New Hope Academy in York. She also served as a teacher, assistant principal, and associate principal in the Harrisburg School District, and most recently, she has served as the junior senior high principal with the Steelton High Spire School District. She has her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Millersville, her math specialist certificate from the University of Colorado, a certificate in urban education from Temple University, and a master's in educational leadership, and a doctor in organizational development and change, both from Cabrini University. So welcome, Dr. Cordero. And that concludes my report.
My apologies for that.
No, no problem.
I'm not used to this little stand in the back. Are there any board comments? If not, Mrs. Martin, is there any correspondence?
One mention, I sent an email to the board today for the induction lunch invite, so just check your email for the induction lunch invite where you can meet all the new staff coming up.
Thank you. This is, excuse me, this is the first place in the meeting where the public may make input on anything in the agenda. Would anyone like to address the board? Is there anyone from CVEA that would like to address the board? Any other employee groups that are being represented? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have items A through K. I don't think there's anything we need to make.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
On policy 918, I noticed again that this is to be posted online to the website. Can somebody remind me who does the posting? And is it someone different for the policies? And do we have a time limit? Like, will it be within 30 days?
That's what we have a board secretary. You want to explain how you handle that?
So when this gets approved, I email it to a PSBA, and they then let me know when it's ready to be posted. Once I get the email back from them saying it's ready to go, then I just simply upload it. Since this is not part of our group, I am hearing from other people that it can take a couple of weeks till it's ready to go.
Thank you. I think you did explain that, but I just couldn't quite remember.
And the other questions?
My other question was on I, the approval of the police MOU agreements. I just want to confirm, East Lampeter is for one year and does include resource, school resource officers. West Earl looked to me like it was more of an agreement for procedures, and that was for two years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No many exchanges.
That is correct, yeah. So because our middle school and high school campus are located within East Lampeter, it's a little, the MOU is a little more complex because it has to involve language about the SROs in there.
Thank you. I will note that when I looked at those myself, I remember the first MOU from East Lampeter was one page long. This one is something like 16 pages. That's part of the safe schools requirements. It's a huge document. Anyone else have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion to approve items A through K?
Motion to approve items A through K.
Second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Ms. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll now move on to the actual discussion items and start with Mrs. Hunsinger. I'm telling you people, he told you you could leave, but we take names. Let's say you now. Now, not if you're going to talk about budget.
I just can't let it go. I just can't let it go. I got to talk about it.
I wish, still, I just think she could finally let go, isn't it something? That would help.
So we obviously do not have a state budget right now. I was a little optimistic middle of last week when the House had passed one House bill, 1330. That bill included, or was going to retain, all of the state subsidies that was proposed in the governor's original budget back in February. Then I came to learn that the House Appropriations Committee had made some amendments to that bill. So we do not have the detail of those amendments, so we don't know what is transpiring there at that, at this time, but hopefully we'll know something a little bit more in the next few days. They're not in session the early part of this week, so hopefully they'll be back in session, and we can get some movement on this in a positive way. The other item that it kind of changed a little bit to is the cyber tuition, cyber charter tuition reform. Originally, they were looking at a flat cap of $8,000 per regular ed student. It seems to be, support for that seems to be waning, and now they're looking at possibly changing the cyber tuition formula calculation, adding some more deductions for us. You know, so for example, right now, when we calculate the cyber tuition cost for CV, it actually includes in the cost, the cost that we pay to the cyber charter schools. So hopefully, that is one of the areas that they are going to look at amending and making some correction. But regardless, I don't know that changes to the formula are going to be as significant to us as if we had gone to a flat cap. So more to follow on that. On another note, as far as the federal government goes with the subsidies that we receive, we receive Title I, II, III, and Title IV subsidies. When Jill submitted the Title I, the grant application just listed Title I, she submitted that to PDE. Title I monies, we get about $1.3 million, so that should be locked in. However, when you went into that application portal, they had removed, PDE had removed Titles II, III, and IV funding. So that totals about, oh, I have it here, $330,000. We are hoping that they are going to put that back available to us in the grant application, and then we can go in and submit our application for those title funds. I haven't heard anything either way on that, so hopefully that will go through. So the total amount, as I mentioned, was $330,000, but of that amount, about $250,000 is paid for, pays for salaries and benefits for certain selected staff members, and the other $81,000 is what we give out to some of the non-public school districts to help them support their academic achievement and professional development, and provides other resources. So they're going to be hurting as well, too, if these funds are not reestablished for us. So again, I really don't have much of an update for you, other than we're just still moving forward without... other than we're just still moving forward without any clear decisions yet, so. Hopefully, next month, I'll be a bearer of good news. Anything, any questions, anything I can have for you for next month? No, just good news. Great. Thank you. See, I did, I think that was the shortest budget presentation I've ever given.
But not the prettiest.
Not the prettiest. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the superintendent's employment agreement. Mark, if you looked at the agenda, there's actually a motion. As I usually ask you to do this motion, if you were on both of B and C here.
B and C. So motion to approve the amendment to Dr. Hartman's employment agreement to revise agreed upon superintendent evaluation form and performance objectives for 2025, 2026 school year.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to hold this for the second motion, please.
Sure. Motion to approve suspension of, did I skip ahead? No, I didn't. Suspension of login requirement under the district loans plan providing evidence is submitted attested to having met the appropriate goals. Second.
Okay. Could we please have a roll call vote for budget items 6B and C?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
And Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Ms. Trobridge?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye. And I think, I think it's still there. Just for your information, if you didn't notice, under item C, under executive content, there is the legal information we refuse to solicit. That turned about, turned out to be more confusing than we thought it was going to be for something that simple. Item D, compensation for the superintendent. Is there, are there any questions or comments or motions?
Motion to approve the adjustment compensation for the superintendent for 2025, 2026.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Ms. Trobridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Item D is approved unanimously. Dr. Cozer?
Good evening. What you're looking at is the agreement with Union Community Care. One of the requirements under the pre-K counts grant is that all of the students receive dental screenings at some point in the course of their pre-K counts. So this is a provider who would offer those dental screenings. There is no charge to the general fund. This is all accounted for in the pre-K counts grant. We actually start by running it through the parents' insurance first, and we try to work with any existing, if they have records of a dental screening recently, we take that first, then we go through their insurance. And so this is the kind of last resort option when, to cover that requirement of the grant. And so this would set up Union Community Care as that provider for our pre-K screenings. It would be $125 per student. And again, we budgeted for that in the grant to cover those screenings.
Questions or comments? Can I ask, is this separate from, this is just for the pre-K kids?
Just for the pre-K kids.
Do I remember correctly, we approved a dentist for the school in December?
Correct.
And that's separate?
Correct.
How does that program differ?
For the K to 12 students? So we run that through the dental screenings, through the nurse's office. This actually provides a different provider that takes some of that burden off the school nursing staff and is managed directly through the pre-K program.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And this will be on the consent agenda next week. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Smith?
I guess Adele told me to eat Chipotle here.
I'm sorry.
I guess she cut that out of the budget. I'm not sure. I'm here, I remember a year ago, I was here for VidRecruiter. Remember the video, okay? VidRecruiter was a good tool, but one thing was, is we hardly ever used it. Reason being is, we don't have much turnover, okay? So that was a good thing. We decided to not use VidRecruiter, but we don't have any applicant tracking process anymore. We don't like when you go to our website, you don't have a link to go to our job, our application. It's a real drawn-out sending that resume, the whole process to the head person who's doing the hiring, the hiring manager of that position. So there's a software out there called Red Rover. Red Rover will be able to, on our website, click the job that's opening, open up an application. Everybody that applies goes into a bucket, okay? Then we do have, say, Dr. Hartman's the hiring manager. He can go through, sort them out. And then we can give permission to the people that are on team to sort them out. They can move the people around one, all in the system, okay? And they see everything in there. You don't have to go to a Google Doc or anything like that. Everything's efficient right in there. Then after round one, you go in and you say, okay, we're going to move these people in round two. Goes into a bucket to round two, okay? And then also, then it goes to the end, who gets the job offer. Then Amy and I can do the onboarding, comes to us. But also, the same thing, one thing we haven't been doing, people that don't get the job don't know they don't get the job. So to send, this also will have a place there to send a thank you, but no thank you letter saying, thanks for applying, but unfortunately, you didn't get the job. So that's what Red Rover is. Now, red, cost-wise, Red Rover's $10,000 versus Frontline. Frontline is almost $23,000 a year. History of Red Rover, just real quick. These people that started Red Rover left Frontline, which that's our Aesop, that's my learning plan. They also have what's called AppleTrack. So these people went, I call it two references, 100%. They support Red Rover. They have 100% retention rate so far. Very good customer service, where Frontline does not. What I'm saying is, the cost-wise for $7,000 was for VidRecruiter. I don't pay that anymore. We get rid of Skyward, which they have a small hiring process in there which very, they say it costs $1,200. So just see how much you get out of the hiring. It's more, it's very good for Adele and their team. So overall, the cost would be another $1,800 out of our budget in order to get this. Positive thing about Red Rover, too, is, remember VidRecruiter, the recording piece? They have that. So I'm getting all the applicant tracking and the video recruiting still for the $10,000. So it's an offset of like $1,800. Any questions on an applicant tracking process? Works.
If I could just add a comment to that, not a question for you, Randy, but Randy and Amy have done a great job. I kind of, we talked last year about a goal of really looking at our hiring and onboarding process and trying to make it more efficient. We had some good things in place, but some steps in the process were a little clunky. And we've really thought we had a solution with some of our current platforms, like Randy mentioned, Skyward, which we're already using for payroll. And it just, they did a really thorough investigation into that. We looked in the frontline. This is the end result of their team looking probably at three or four different products and really finding one that we think is cost-effective, but also a quality product. And so I just want to kudos to you guys, because I know it was a, it was a big ask to look into it because there's a lot of tools that are out there. But we were really impressed with the demos and what we've been learning about Red Rover. So we're excited about it.
Questions? Guess I got to eat Chipotle.
We will approve this, but I'm going to wait for the next one so we can take the extra vote. Mrs. Hunsinger, we should have kept you here.
So in the last year or two, I've asked you to approve some of the supplemental transportation agreements. This is another supplemental transportation agreement that we would like to enter into with BlueCap Transportation. What is different about this particular company, though, is they specialize in having transportation services and any specialized equipment and any other needs for students that are in our special education program. So this would not be replacing any of our existing services, but would be adding on for students that would need this particular type of transportation.
Question, must it be in special ed? Don't we have some students who need special transportation but aren't in special ed?
They don't have to be in special, special ed, no. But it's just what's nice about this is that the drivers are particularly trained. They have certain equipment, certain seats, if necessary, for the students.
But they won't take any handicapped students?
Mm-hmm, yes.
What is happening with those students now?
They are still being transported, but some, sometimes it's a little more of a challenge to have some of the, yes. Whereas these drivers are particularly trained, and we have the, the buses are equipped specifically for these students. So if possible, any other questions?
Yes. Do they ask us to have a minimum of students?
No. No, they have two options for us. One is to basically purchase a van, a small specialized van, or we can pay on a per day basis. So, and I think that's the option that we want to go with at this point.
Where are they located, or where do they come from?
They are actually relatively new. And they have, one of the, one of the owners is from the transportation company, Faithful, Faithful Transportation. And I'm not sure who the other one is from. But they are local. They are in the area. I don't have a specific address for them that I'm seeing off the top of my head. Okay.
Thank you.
Will they be sending more to one school district at a time?
That's feasible, because...
Where I'm going with this is whether they'd be able to get our students here on a timely basis, if they're doing stuff.
Oh, they would have to, yes. They would have to get our students here timely basis, yes. And I, if we partner with other school districts or share services, that would help with our costs also. We'd split the costs.
Yeah. Any other questions? If not, then I would take a motion to approve items both F and G.
I move to approve items F, G.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mr. Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Ms. Trobridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Unanimous, nine, zero.
Both of these items pass unanimously. Are there any questions for the finance and operations report?
All that was, was just the summary, correct?
Yes, just the investment summary. That's it. The curriculum instruction will not be there this month? Anything under federal funds?
Nothing other than to reiterate what Adele shared with the state budget and what we learned from the state, but via what's happening at the federal government, is we have our Title I grant has been submitted and accepted for the year. But the messaging we got last week, and I did forward this on the board, was right now, I guess the language they're using is under, the federal government is reviewing the state's plan for Title III and IIa and IV, which impacts us. So right now, we do not have those funds or those grants written at this point. So we're kind of in a wait-and-see position right now.
I saw today where the after-school grants were reinstated. So you never know. At first, they say it's canceled, and then the money is back. We believe it, but we get the check.
Right.
Okay. Board reports. For the IU, I have one, one thing that I would usually wait till next month for. But I don't know if you noticed, but in the large budget bill that was passed last week, there was, there's a lot in that bill. And you may or may not know that included in that bill are federal tax credits for private school vouchers from the federal government. Most people didn't even know that. I guess most people didn't know much of what was in that huge bill. I do have copies of summaries of it. I brought a couple with me, if anyone would like them. If not, I can, I can get them to you. There were, there were two versions of it. One was from the House, and that one, the parliamentarian removed. And then at the last minute, the Senate put a voucher bill in. It's a strange bill. It's going to be very expensive. But the states have to opt into it. So then there'll be another fight at the state level as to whether or not we participate. So if anyone wants to copy that, let me know. Now I brought a couple copies with me. Does the construction team have any update?
There's a report attached. Said we can just see what's in the report attached. The oil is going to move just on.
Okay. If not, then this is a time in the meeting when anyone could address the board on an issue of interest. If there are none, any announcements or initiatives from any board members? You have the dates for our meetings. If there are no other issues, we will take a motion to adjourn to the executive session to review a staff policy waiver request and to, we will be taking time to schedule the last of our policies, but we will not be discussing the policies tonight, not in the executive session. Don't need that. All I need, a motion to go to executive session.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
All in favor, you say aye. Opposed or abstentions, if not, you are returned.